Bring the city council meeting to order. Will you please rise and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight it looks like we have a councillor Farmer and councillor Matthews and councillor De novo cannot make it. But Mayor Benetti and councillor Stevens are joining us online. So we do have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is public comments. If you'd like to make a comment on something that isn't on the agenda, you can come up and do so now. Mike?
Mike Vaughn, 598 North Fourth Court, Coos Bay.
Three minutes.
Yep. Just giving you an update on the mural progress at the chip pile. That got all pressure cleaned both sides yesterday. And I just got word from the painter this morning, we've, we're gonna start painting primer in the morning. So it's moving right along. I got another forty-five days till that bond is up. But we got drawings that are progressing for that layout of the two towboats and should be done early.
That's great. It's exciting to hear. How about the, wasn't there some repairs that needed?
What's that?
Wasn't there some repairs that needed to be done?
Yeah, that got done this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, that's setting up now and it'll come off, probably come off tomorrow. But yeah, moving along.
Okay, great. Good to hear.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has anything that is not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number three. Consent calendar.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is consideration to approve emergency medical services proclamation. Is that you, Chief?
Yes. So whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency medical physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week.
Now therefore, on October 19th, Mayor of the City of Coos Bay, Oregon, in recognition of this mandate hereby proclaimed May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two as Emergency Medical Services Week, where the theme EMS Week rises to the challenge and carries in the meeting to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody that provides emergency services to the community, especially the last two years. I'm sure it's been very difficult and we truly appreciate it. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve Emergency Medical Services Proclamation.
I have a question.
We got a motion and a second to approve the Emergency Medical Services Proclamation. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, consideration to approve Building Safety Month Proclamation. Jim?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll read that. Whereas the City of Coos Bay is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disaster strikes, and whereas our confidence and the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings, and whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play, and whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes, and whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, safety for all, building codes in action, the theme of the Building Code Month 2022 encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all of our benefit. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property.
Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Coos Bay, do hereby participate in Building Safety Month activities. I missed that. Let me redo this. Mayor of the City of Coos Bay, you hereby proclaim the month of May, 2022, Coos Bay, Oregon, and encourage citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. My apologies.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mayor. Any comments from the council? Jim, I'd like to thank the Building Codes Division for all they do for the city as well.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion to a-
Second.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second to approve Building Safety Month Proclamation. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I should note that councillor Farmer has joined us online as well. Item number six is consideration to approve National Foster Care Month Proclamation. Nicole?
Yes, thank you. I will read this. Whereas children are key to Oregon's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and whereas children have a right to thrive, learn, and grow in a safe environment, and whereas resource foster parents provide the care, safety, and stability for children and youth in foster care whose parents need time to learn new skills to become the parents their kids need them to be, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has brought to light the importance of safety, stability, and family which resource foster families provide, and whereas Oregon resource foster families are caring for more than seven thousand children and youth in out-of-home placement today while a child's parents or caregivers address safety concerns in the home, and whereas Oregon is experiencing a shortage of resource foster parents in every community and needs families willing to care for older youth, children with complex behavioral and mental health needs, siblings groups, and youth who identify as LGBTQIA2A2S+, and whereas we must recognize the important role resource foster parents play in caring for children who have experienced abuse and neglect, supporting family reunification and building strong communities, and whereas we all play a role in ensuring Oregon's children are healthy and safe and are able to reach their full potential, and whereas we all play a role in preventing child abuse and neglect by strengthening families.
Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Coos Bay, and on behalf of the city council, we hereby proclaim the month of May, 2022, as Foster Care Month. And the City of Coos Bay is celebrating the time which is made by those who chose to be foster parents.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Mayor. In my job out at the Boys and Girls Club, I see firsthand the importance of foster families in this foster care program. So giving them this recognition is well deserved, in my opinion. Do we have any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we proclaim the month of May Foster Care Month in the City of Coos Bay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve National Foster Care Month Proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
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 I think we got everybody. Motion carries. Item number seven is appointment to the Coos Bay North Bend Water Board.
I'll take that. Maybe some background is in order. In the mid-forties, the cities of Coos Bay and North Bend jointly purchased a privately-owned water utility. Under state statute and under agreement, neither city actually runs the utility, but yet a third entity runs it and it's comprised and managed by a staff who's overseen by a board. Through our agreement, City of Coos Bay appoints two representatives to the board and the City of North Bend appoints two representatives to the board. Recently, one of our board members, or one of our board seats, has come open. And it's been tradition, at least in the last twenty or so years, that the city takes applications, the city council interviews those applicants, and then based on that, the council decides who to appoint. At the most recent opening, councillor Matthews requested to sit in that position. I did a little bit of research when I wanted to see if that was allowable. And what I did learn is that that actually was a practice many years ago, that councillor from each side or one of its elected officials did sit on that board. But while looking at that, I also came across Coos Bay Municipal Code and it talked about filling positions. And one of the things I learned is that we might have not been following the ordinance exactly to the letter of the law. Because our ordinance basically says, instead of taking applications, which were not precluded from, it says nominations for appointments shall be made by the mayor and shall be subject to confirmation by the Coos Bay City Council. The mayor has made the nomination. But the second part is that it shall be submitted to the council for at least two weeks prior to the scheduled date for confirmation. So in, in order to be in keeping with this ordinance, first, I think you have to wait until your next meeting before you can take a vote on, to confirm the appointment. Secondly, I would suggest that we, this might be a taking care of business issue, that we may need to update the 1999 ordinance to reflect how you generally take applications or appoint people to the various boards, committees, and commissions.
Thanks, Roger.
Mr. Joe, I definitely think that we need to revisit the ordinance from 1999. Potentially, there could be a vacancy if the mayor, whoever he gives time, makes an appointment and the council doesn't represent him, he'd have an empty position. So I think that we need to change this ordinance and to reflect how we can do this.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments from the council? I agree with the mayor. We were looking at this the other day and I think it does need to be changed. Like the mayor states, if the mayor who's seated nominates somebody but the council doesn't vote for that person, then that seat just remains empty and I don't like that idea.
Correct. So in keeping with the current ordinance, we'll go ahead and reschedule the vote for confirmation at your next meeting to give the proper two weeks' time.
Is that good with everybody?
Yeah, I think so. You know, I mean, I personally believe that we should have a councillor from each city represented on this board. It's an important entity of ours. It's a joint ownership. And I think it's important that we have a representative. And as Roger mentioned in the past, we had councillors under, Greg Solars, who's a representative of ours now, started out as a councillor and has continued through in that position. Prior to that, we had Bill Pyle from the City of Coos Bay, who joined the council sitting on this at one time also. I don't think that's, oh, that definitely should be a councillor represented.
How long ago was it that we actually had a councillor seated?
That would have been the late nineties and early two thousands.
So like the ordinance probably needs to be updated. Does the City of North Bend have a councillor represented on that board? I don't-
He, Greg Solars is a past North Bend city councillor and at one time the City of North Bend had the Public Works Director as one of the, as one of the board members.
When we, as I think, when we were, when I and the general manager, Greg Solars, had discussions, opened part of the ownership to the public, which is a merit, he was there, and said, and dated, and the line from there, and we discussed lots of them also having represented. They indicated they thought that was a good idea. Now how they proceed with it, and where his time turns to our, I felt, on this one.
Yeah, I, I had looked it up online, but I thought for purposes of the public that that would be good information to share.
Any other further discussion?
Well, I just wanted to point, we do have another company that could be considered in September, Roger, am I correct, 2022, for a position?
Yes, Dr. Sharps is currently serving on the water board and has for a number of years. And his term of office comes due at December thirty-first of this year.
Anything else? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number eight, consideration of award of 2022 timber sale contract. Jennifer's gonna do that tonight.
Thank you. The city typically conducts timber sales on their forest land every other year. This year, the city is proposing a timber sale on forty-two point six acres. The timber volume was determined by a cruise performed by Stuntsner Engineering and Forestry and estimated at seventeen hundred million board feet is available for harvest. The sale was advertised in March and opened bids the week of April eleventh, and the city received two responses. So Scott Timber Company for five hundred nine thousand eight hundred and six and Swanson for four hundred twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-nine and sixty-eight cents. In addition to the forestry consultant's scope and fee, which is already underway, further costs will be necessary to complete the 2022 timber sale. These costs consist of reforestation, the nineteen eighty water board road use agreement reimbursement fee for construction of the loop road, and the annual loop road maintenance costs, and a fifteen percent contingency, which totals to thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. The budget implications? The cost for additional items to complete the 2022 timber sale will be funded from timber sale proceeds. The sale, excuse me, the source of funds for this contract is the capital improvement fund timber costs. The total, as stated previously, will be thirty-two hundred, thirty-two thousand dollars with a contingency of fifteen thousand for a grand total of thirty-six thousand eight hundred. If it pleases council, award the 2022 timber sale to Scott Timber Company and approve the additional costs required to complete the 2022 timber sale for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand eight hundred.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm not sure if it's a question for you or Nicole, but are these funds earmarked for anything? Like typically, we bought fire trucks with them and that sort of thing, right?
Yes. Historically, they have been used for large purchase items like that. We usually also purchase police vehicles. We have those in rotation, either doing two or three every year. Those are our most driven vehicles. Obviously, need more ready replacements. The other thing that we have in there often are building improvements. So it really depends on, you know, what kind of funds we end up receiving, how many of those items. We have some items on this revolving list with the different properties that we have throughout the city.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for Jennifer?
I do. I have a question on the contingency. You know, I always have some on the contingency.
Okay.
It, what, have we used contingencies in the past on this? I mean, it seems pretty cut and dry, no pun intended. Seems pretty cut and dry. What would the contingency possibly be needed for?
Only, only one time where we underestimated the cost for reforestation, just due to the market. We just-
Okay. All right.
Any other questions, comments? How would you like to proceed?
I move we award the 2022 timber sale contract to Scott Timber Company and approve additional costs. That includes repayment of loop road construction, annual loop road maintenance, and reforestation planning contract required to complete the 2022 timber sale for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2022 timber sale contract. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer. Number nine is approval to initiate right-of-way vacation of a portion of North Eighth Street.
I'll take this. Thank you. The city received a request to vacate a thirty-foot by one-hundred-foot portion of North Eighth Street right-of-way just north of Teakwood. The owner and developer, Tired Rose LLC, owns Block Five of Platte H. Addition to Marshfield and is looking at developing that property and has requested the vacation of this portion of North Street, North Eighth Street along the west edge of their property. Council is being asked to initiate the vacation process for said portion of North Eighth Street. One of the reasons for this vacation request is the City of Coos Bay is requesting that the developer dedicate twenty feet of right-of-way for a distance of just over three hundred and seventeen feet on North Eighth Street on the northerly portion of what's called Tax Lot 500. This dedication will be a condition of land use process for the proposed development and is for future expansion of Eighth Street if that's ever required in the future. This dedication would be a condition of the land use process and the resulting loss of property would remove some developable land for the two fifteen hundred square foot, or fifteen thousand square foot tenants that are proposed for the site. The proposed vacation will aid in developing the balance of the property and will assist in making up the loss of land with the twenty-foot dedication on the north. City departments and utility providers have reviewed this request and none have any objections. Because the vacation area is within a thousand feet of the bay, the International Port of Coos Bay is also required to approve the vacation. Port staff does not foresee any issues. However, the port commission will consider this request at their May meeting. If it pleases the council, initiate the vacation request for a portion of North Eighth Street adjacent to Block Five of the Platte H. Addition to Marshfield. And in June, this would come back to you at a public hearing to, for consideration.
Thank you, Jim. Counsel, any questions for Jim? Any comments? How would you like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to initiate the vacation request for a portion of North Eighth Street adjacent to Block Five of the Platte H. Addition to Marshfield.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, to initiate the right-of-way vacation of a portion of North Eighth Street. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, public hearing to consider adoption of proposed Empire Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. Approval would require enactment of proposed ordinance. Nicole?
Yes, I can give a little background. At the agency's March fifteenth meeting, staff was instructed to begin some work with our urban renewal consultant, Elaine Howard, in working on an Empire Plan Amendment. This process would include adding an additional eight point nine four acres to the Empire Plan. And those acres are within John Toppets Park. The process is a lengthy process, involves notification of the overlapping taxing districts. That was a letter that was sent out to each district. That opens a forty-five-day comment period in which they can make comment to the Urban Renewal Agency and/or the city. That notification was followed by a presentation to the Coos Bay Planning Commission, which was completed in April on their April twelfth meeting. We also are required, part of this process, to do a presentation to the county commissioners. That was also completed in April at their April nineteenth meeting. And it requires the notification of the taxpayers within city limits. That notification was performed by staff. I'm assuming that's why the bulk of people are here, is they were notified that there would be a public hearing tonight. And then finally, the public hearing and presentation to council of the proposed amendment.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, does council have any questions, Nicole? Okay, hearing none, I'll open the public hearing.
Councillor Miles, I believe that some of these people maybe on this urban renewal list wanted to speak on the, on the boundary.
I'll start here and then move over there. First name on my list is Keith Toppets. Remember you have three minutes and I'll indicate when you have one.
My name's Keith Toppets and Eight 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 Telegraph Drive is where I reside. I'm just gonna say hello to the councillors, but there's a few missing, and the mayor.
It's an intimate group tonight.
As of city council meeting on February twenty-sixth, seventy-nine, Resolution seventy-nine dash nineteen, Resolution eighty dash fifty-three, Resolution ninety-seven dash twenty on eight nineteen clearly states on the last four-word sentence from this day forward. The next problem is the city has wetlands, the Empire Lakes. And if there was ever a law that needed enforcement, it's the wetlands that are there. There's birds there, starting with gray horned owls are right there. My family has, has adjacent land and its owners next to that. We don't think that zone should go. And I also have a notice from my mother. Taking access from John Toppets Park is giving up an irreplaceable piece of land. Coos Bay has been admired and commented, complimented for preserving such a natural area. It is a part where generations to come can learn and enjoy. Giving up this land for a building is a loss to all.
Thank you. Next name on the list, looks like it's Christine Moffett.
Council members and public, I stand today in strong support for amending the Empire District urban renewal boundaries to include the location of the proposed library and nine-one-one communications center. The current opportunity to support the district by including this new facility in the Empire Lakes- Lakes District is an excellent proposal. The new library design and setting at the edge of Toppets Park provides an outstanding opportunity for Empire. The building will highlight natural assets and provide a physical environment to maximize learning. The interior and outside areas will also include a variety of settings for group and individual spaces to enhance the psychological learning environments and add to emotional safety. Equity of resources within Coos Bay community will be enhanced with this additional development. The Empire region of Coos Bay has far fewer community resources than the downtown district, although chronologically is the oldest settlement. I'm a resident of Empire and have a strong supporter of securing and enhancing the business and residential environment. This proposal is an excellent opportunity. Moreover, a new and expanded library within the neighborhoods of Empire will open a wealth of opportunities for integration, cooperation, and synergy not previously accessible to those in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. George McNair?
He doesn't want to talk, though I do.
Chris, Chris?
Yeah. He thinks that I got him here under false pretenses.
I'm Chris McNair, and I live at 695 Telegraph Drive, and if it's one thing I can do very good, it's jump to conclusions. So, we got this notice, and we read all kinds of things into it. And every time I read it, it looks like it's saying something different. So, I don't know if I'm here just to give a speech, or if, can I get clarification, or what?
Did you have a question I can help you with?
Well, I have a question, because it says, you're gonna hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance for the adoption of the proposed Empire Urban Renewal Plan. So this is that hearing.
That is correct.
Okay. So then it goes on to say that you, or the amendment intends to add 8.94 acres to the plan, all within the park, which has been identified as the future location, provided that Measure 4196 passes.
You are correct.
So, what if this, you add that parcel in, and 4196 doesn't pass?
Then I'm assuming then that the city's gonna look for another way to fund the library.
And, you know, I just heard word that Kokil is lucky enough to get the Banner Bank as their new library. Now, wouldn't that be wonderful? If we could just slow down for a little bit and see what options are out there? I feel like we're really jumping the gun. This is the first time I've ever heard of this. So I don't know, maybe I'm got my nose in a book too much at home or something, but this is the first time.
Hopefully, it's a good book from the library. But, we've actually, this council and the council before has been talking about the need for a new library since.
Have you sent notices out? That's what I'm seeing.
Well, actually, we put notices in the paper, and we've been sending stuff on.
Oh, I don't get this paper.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's good for wrapping fish, but that's about it.
We're also putting information on Facebook, and we're sending out news releases, but we've been talking about it since 2014, about the need for a library.
And they've actually been looking for a new site for the library since 2016.
Hmm, well, good.
And wasn't there?
Okay, so it says that the amendment will not increase property tax rates.
That is correct.
Okay, so, are you talking about the library service tax that we all pay?
It's because the land is actually already owned by the City of Coos Bay, so it's not, it's not on the tax rolls, so just expanding that will not.
Because we are gonna get our taxes increased. Is that my signal? That I'm done talking?
I think you're thinking the bond and the boundary, the bond is different than the boundary. The bond measure that's going to voters is, is what you're thinking about, the financial portion.
Okay.
The portion on this expansion is already owned by the city, so.
Okay, and it says this ordinance, if approved, is subject to referendum. What is, what do you mean by that?
Sure, a referendum, there's a process by which, should the voters wish, if the council makes a decision that they don't like, they can refer it back to the ballot.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet.
Susan Anderson?
Hello again.
Hello.
I feel like this has become my permanent Tuesday evening process here. I really came tonight solely to provide the latest update in the bond campaign, but the committee asked me to ask you to do some clarification tonight, because as we've already seen, there's a lot of misinformation, and you all have the power to clarify, so. And unfortunately, Mr. Toppets left, and that seems to be the way of the push right now, is like, we'll just spew out, and we don't wanna listen to the other side. But I have been a fervent user of Toppets Park since I moved here 24 years ago. It was one of the first city parks I discovered, and I certainly wouldn't support anything that would destroy the park. But I wish that you all would clarify the fact that if the bond passes, we are not closing the park, we are not restricting fishing, we are not dishonoring John Toppets land donation. None of his land that was donated is being used for this building, nor will any of it be impacted by the library. We are not destroying the forest. In fact, there'll probably be more trees there after the library's there than there are now. Most importantly, the urban renewal, you can understand, there's a lot of confusion. I've been at many city council meetings, we've been talking about this urban renewal expansion for months, that it is simply a way of using additional funding for a library and expanding the access of the city. It is not changing the park in any way, not changing the name, not changing the structure of the park, or any way it will be used, nor will there be taxes on the urban renewal portion. If the bond passes, that's different, we're taxing to pay for the building, but urban renewal doesn't impact anybody's taxes. So, anyway, they asked me to say that, I generally don't respond to the negatives, because there's not much you can say. But I wanted to give you an update, we are changing where we're going now, it's the, program is different now, but up to date, we've given 739 phone calls, 798 visits.
One minute.
To people in the city. We've garnered 297 yes commitments, 79 no's, and 188 maybes. Today, we mailed over 2,000 flyers to potential voters, so that they can get more information. And the next phase of the campaign will be calling to get out the vote and make sure that our yes voters show up. So that's where we are, and I hope you can clarify this urban renewal mess tonight, so that people understand what we're trying to do for the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that didn't get on the list that would like to speak while the public hearing's open? Bob?
Robert Moore, 950 South Fourth Street, Coos Bay. I have a very short comment, I just wanted to make sure that people in the audience understood that the, the library site itself is two acres out of a 200-acre park. That library site will impact 1% of the acreage of the park. So, it, it may sound like it's going to have this huge impact on a park, where it really won't. And all of the access trails will be maintained, one will have to be moved slightly, but it will still be maintained. People will not lose any access whatsoever to the park. In fact, access will be improved when they expand and modify the parking lot. So, I think those are important points that people should know. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else have any comments?
Hi, my name is Kelvin Welborn. I've lived in the Empire area for 67 years, and I have no idea moving the library from downtown Coos Bay to Empire is going to benefit anybody that uses the library. I really would like to explain. It's centralized here in Coos Bay, catches the Bunker Hill area, East Side area, downtown area. I just don't get it. I would think we'd focus more on our roads and getting the people off the street, rather than see them laying along the post office, drugged out. I just don't get it. I'd like it explained to me, if you would.
I can take that. Counsel President, so the reason the libraries, we need to do libraries, our current library foundation has failed. We did an exhaustive examination in the 2014, which revealed that the entire foundation has failed, and there's incremental sinking of the library. It was determined that the cost to repair the building far exceeded its value. So it was determined we would work towards replacing a library. Now, much work went into finding a proper location, the desire was to place it back in the downtown. Again, we needed a little more than two acres. In addition, it was the desire of the council then, and still is the desire of this council, that when we build a new facility, that we build it out of, away from the tsunami inundation zone and out of the 100-year flood zone. Our current library is in both. There is not a two-acre parcel in the downtown area that's out of both flood and tsunami inundation zones that's appropriate. So, the work began to look at other locations. Ultimately, this is where it's landed. The purpose also will be to put in a 911 communications center, so that we can remove this important component that we have here in this building, again, out of the tsunami inundation zone. The other design of the library is that, in the event of a post-disaster, that we'll be able to use that center to provide emergency services out of. So that really, that the whole design is to get it out of the tsunami inundation zone. The reality is that we have many library customers that live East Side, Inglewood, Empire, Charleston, and other places. Libraries are a destination, people will go to where the library's at. The reality is, I think this council's desire is to build a building that will last more than 60 years, and withstand a seismic event or a tsunami.
Thanks, Roger. Is there any other public comment?
Hello, I am Austin Welborn, I'm 19. I wanna give a view of somewhat, somewhat the youth, I think that's a view that has not been talked about a lot. Where the library is situated now, we can upgrade it, there are ways to upgrade it and stuff like that. You've clearly stated there was ways to upgrade the library, and it also has historical, you can make it a historical building if you upgrade it and stuff like that. But also, where the schools are located, you have Millicoma, you have Marshfield, you have Marshfield Junior High, all those students who are lower income, who don't have access to computers, who don't have that, you can, they can walk down to the library, instead of spending gas money, driving to Empire, to where, that's money that could've gone toward food, stuff like that. It's just easier for school students who don't have that access to walk down to the library and also Empire Lakes. I won't walk there by myself, because I've cleaned up homeless camps in Empire Lakes and stuff like that. Where the library is now, it's safer, you have the police station here, next to the library, safer. Why move it to an environment where the youth are vulnerable?
Thank you, Austin. I'll answer the question on the, the location. First of all, it's gonna have a 911 center, so it's gonna have 24/7 police presence out there, which is not only gonna help the library, but also the park as well. And also, the library steering committee has considered the teens' point of view, and that's why this new library is actually gonna have a teen room in it, where this, our current library does not.
Well, couldn't you build one? Couldn't that be an upgrade?
The problem with upgrading, like Roger said, is it's, it's not cost-effective, because it's gonna cost more than it would cost us to build a new one, and on top of that, we would have to close the library down for a year and a half, two years, and we would have to lay off staff for that time, and staff aren't gonna wait around for the new library to open.
You'd have to store all the.
And, yeah, we gotta store all the books and materials.
Okay.
Is it appropriate to add an additional comment? Because he did have some questions. I would encourage you to contact the librarian, the staff will give you a tour. You can see the newest section in the library downtown, and how that's been affected, there are actually two creeks that run on both sides of it, so that building is constantly doing this. So, I don't know what the estimates are to repair that building versus, you know, building a new one.
We don't have current estimates, we had estimates in 2014, and even at that time, it was exceeded more than, and I wanna say it was $8 million, but it only fixed the foundation. It did not fix all the other ailments of the building, which is a 60-year-old building.
Thank you, Austin.
Could I add one more thing?
Yeah, and so, Austin, this is Jennifer, and thank you for your comments, but I also want to let you know, we had a homeless problem at the existing library, to the point that we had to have security company to man full-time when libraries opened, to make sure they take care of that issue. And also, in our middle school, we also have the elementary school, that those envisioned children and kids, younger children, will be only use the library at WAC, I mean, so it's a balancing act. I understand where you're coming from downtown, there's also a need to be utilized by those in the cities out there. And the other thing is, in that question, so, where the downtown one, as the city manager mentioned.
Can I add a, share a comment? You talk about there being those elementary school and middle school, isn't the SWAC library open to the public too, if you have a library card?
Yes, so the SWAC library is an educational library, and it's totally different than, I guess we could, I know Sammy's addressed that many times, they are two totally different libraries.
It's a reference library, and actually, there's very few books in that library that are available to the public to check out, and none of their computers, I believe, are available for public use.
There are two computers at SWAC available to the public, the public, the current Coos Bay library has, what, 18? Who doesn't thought it, and there's no space in SWAC, it's very.
I appreciate you coming up, it is important for us to hear your perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And everyone.
Do we have any more comments? Monica?
My name is Julie, Julie Heron, and I live at 1072 Elrod in Coos Bay, and I've was interested in that young man's comments, because I've thought about this. There are a lot of kids that don't have access to computers, and who use the Coos Bay library because it's so handy. And I'm wondering if there isn't some way that you can guarantee that there would be public transportation for those kids out to the Empire Library, maybe after-school buses or something like that, so that those kids who are not able to have computers have access to them.
We have been in talks with the public transit system, and they are very interested in creating a new loop that will go right to that library, to the new library.
Thank you. I don't think it's out of the question either to talk to the bus company, that might be a good idea for the steering committee to maybe communicate with Becky over at the bus company, because they may have route that they could put in for the kids.
Any other public comments? Should I close the public hearing before we discuss?
Yes.
Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any comments?
I have a question, I need for clarification. Mr. Keith Toppets mentioned, and he said, the rectifier is referred, if this is a wetland that will be building on out there, am I correct? Is that, I didn't understand that. Thanks.
I can answer, well, maybe with Jennifer's help, I can answer this. Where we're citing the library, I don't believe there's actually any wetlands. Is there, maybe there's a small portion that will be mitigated?
It's the expanded parking area, and yes, there will be mitigation.
It's the expanded parking area, and yes, there will be mitigation.
Did you, did you get that, Joe?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Also, for, also for clarification on that issue, a lot of that area that's being brought in is already parking lot.
Correct.
Or road, or pavement, or pathway.
And also, I just wanted to reiterate, that Susan Anderson mentioned that access to the park, or maybe with the SWAC, or that that won't be impacted by the existing library.
Thank you, Joe. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I was going to make a comment on the, Mr. Toppets' comments about access to the area. I think right off the bat, when this project came to the council, the majority of councilors were concerned that we didn't change the feel of that park, that it is a natural area. I've lived in this community all my life, pretty much, but except two years, and was a frequent visitor to the library downtown. But as a teenager and college student, I accessed Toppets Park. And actually, what the city has done in there to, to clean up and enhance the pathways has been wonderful. I hadn't been there for years after I left to go off to university and have some kids. But this was a concern of this council that we don't change what that area is because of, all of our parks are different. And this actually enhances and improves some of the pathways, the access for people with disabilities, the programs that the library can do. And I think it's important to say that. We already addressed the transportation thing, and the concerns for safety and security, I think you addressed. That 911 call center is, is really necessary for us to look at as a council. We have a fiduciary responsibility to provide those public services. And I think this actually is an improvement that's needed for our entire community. And that center will have 24/7 staffing in that park and security around that building. I think it actually will enhance that area as well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Drew, Sarah, you have anything?
This is Drew. I'm good.
Okay, I'll just...
Anything?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
Bottom line, since my bottom line is I'm set after I tell you who you are, for a lot of other, you know, because we don't have a lot of other options, like, the council don't allow people to, so, I appreciate everyone's coming, asking questions, I like it's important to be clarification.
And I just want to bring you to write a little more comment, that they came up with one of the architectural, the last one that they came and made a presentation. This will be the only evacuation center in Coos Bay urban area that withstand a catastrophic event. There's no other facility that can do that in that area. And I think that we sometimes overlook that. I think this was important, bringing with architects and district with the library. If you'll have a night long on the center, and a generator, and initially we'll put some solar panels in all the facility, everything, if it ever happens, hopefully.
Thank you, Joe. So, my comment is, this has been going on since 2014. There, there was an exhaustive search for sites downtown, and we just can't, we don't have time to keep looking for something that isn't there. The current library may have two, three, four years at the most left, and if we don't find a new site for a new library and build a new library, the library's going to go away, and that's severely disappointing to me. As far as what we're, we're here tonight to do, we're just bringing in some acreage into the urban renewal zone so that we can provide funding for some of the infrastructure of the new library. We're only using two acres out of 200-acre park, and, and the steering committee along with the design team has done a very thoughtful process through every step of the way to select a site that is, is the least disruptive to the park. In my opinion, it's going to enhance the park greatly. And there's, there was six public meetings. We asked for input from the community, and I just, this whole process has been very thoughtful, and it's just time. We've, we've ran out of time. We've got, we've got to build a new library. That's the bottom line. Is there any other comments? I meant from the council. We already closed the public meeting. Sorry.
Close the public hearing.
How would you like to proceed, council?
I'll make a motion, the speaker. The commandment in, since this Coos Bay ordinance plan is enacted, the proposed ordinance amendment to the Empire Urban Renewal Plan.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds to adopt the proposed urban renewal plan amendment.
Do you want to get the motion? Thank you, Robert.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call.
An ordinance making certain determinations and findings relating to and approving the Empire Urban Renewal Plan substantial amendment, Amendment 14, and directing that notice of approval be published. Counselor Farmer?
Aye.
Counselor Kilmer?
Aye.
Counselor Miles?
Aye.
Counselor Stevens?
Aye.
Mayor Benetti?
Aye.
Ordinance number 554 has been duly enacted.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa, and thank you for everybody coming out. We love to hear your comments from people, questions. Again, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. You can contact Roger. Carmen Matthews isn't here tonight, but he's a great resource as well. And I'm sure Susan Anderson would be happy to answer your questions as well, or Bob.
They can also message the Facebook page, if they have a Facebook, or there's a website available as well. BuildCBlibrary.com.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, moving on. Number 11 is City Manager's Report, which I understand is Assistant City Manager's Report tonight?
It is. Thank you. So I'm sure everyone is anxiously awaiting news that we're going to be having the budget meeting, meetings coming up. Those will be happening next week on Thursday, the 12th. We will start those meetings with the Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 6:00, followed by the City Council meeting. We'll be hopeful that we can work through both of those budgets during that time, but we do have alternative meeting on the 19th slot scheduled, just in case we need to have some more time. I would like to share on behalf of the Finance Department that we are currently undergoing the spring field work for preliminary audit procedures. It's a standard practice that they come in May, and they typically look at, we think of that time period as a review of our P&L. So they're looking at payroll, revenues, expenses, those kinds of items. They'll come back in September, and at that point, they're looking at balance sheet items, balances of cash, payables, receivables, those types of things. It's part of the process that we're required by the State of Oregon to have an annual audit, and they are going to present to you whether or not the Finance Department, the city as a whole, because we do have participation and support from all of the other departments, and making sure all their documentation is order, in order and following procedures. We, we must follow general, generally accepted accounting practices. So they'll make a determination and present that to you typically in December, at your first December meeting. And then the last thing, short City Manager's Report, and no PowerPoint, you'll notice. The last thing, I was going to just remind everyone that the, you have an opportunity to participate in a discussion tomorrow at the Mill Casino from 4:00 to 6:00, and it's a, um, Win Energy Listening Session that is being brought to us by Senator Roblin, and also the, I think the county is also supporting that. So, if anyone has interest, at the casino, I believe probably the salmon room, tomorrow, 4:00 to 6:00.
Thank you, Nicole. Council comments? Sarah?
I'm ready.
Thank you, Sarah. Drew?
I'm tied.
Mayor?
Uh, yes. I apologize, I didn't intend to be deceiving, and I have a personal matter that took downtown that I needed to deal with. And Robert, I want to thank you to join in.
Hopefully I didn't fail too bad.
You did a great job. I think this is wrong.
Yeah, just had a couple of things. I wanted to recognize our proclamations tonight, all of those things that were recognized, EMS Week, Building Month, Foster Care, very important things in our community that are happening. Also, wanted to mention what a great thing it was to see our city participate in the Family Fun Day events. The Police Department was there, our Fire Department, working with Bay Cities Ambulance, and, and all of the services that are provided to families in this community. It's a great event. We haven't been able to do that for a couple of years, and it was nice to see everyone out. Better-than-expected attendance. I think they had almost 900 folks that, that they, that came through there, and that was, of course, to promote the Kids Hope Center and Berry Hospital, put that on. And then lastly, just to mention that finally it's here. I can't believe it's May already, but Farmer's Market opens tomorrow at 9:00 downtown Coos Bay. That's it.
Thank you, Stephanie. I just have a couple of things. One, I want to thank everybody who came out to the Empire Coalition and Star Hope mural dedication. I saw a lot of city staff out there, and I appreciate their presence. And Sammy did a great job with her presentation as well, so thank you, Sammy. And then, secondly, I want to thank the Bond Committee for all the work they've done. I mean, we wouldn't be as far along as we are without your help, and there's, there's many people beyond the Bond Committee that have participated in this library project, and it's much appreciated. And that's all I have. With that, I'll adjourn the City Council meeting and pass it off to Chair Kilmer for the Urban Renewal Agency.
Okay, then I will open up the meeting of the Coos Bay Urban Renewal Agency, and our first item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody that would like to make a public comment for an item that's not already on the agenda? See what I do, everybody leaves the room.
[laughing]
Sensing none, we'll go on to item number two, which is our consent calendar and consideration of that, the minutes and the financial reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
The motion carries. Our next item is consideration to approve the request for design revisions to a previously awarded improvement grant for 260 and 264 South Broadway.
Okay, we went over this with you last week, and this is to summarize. Last August, you approved an improvement program grant for 260 and 264 South Broadway for east and west elevation redesign. The property owners seek revisions to the approved design plans that include, on the 260 South Broadway west elevation, change the facade from fiber cement siding installation to a stucco finish system, and change the overhead glass garage door to four single-hung fiberglass windows. And the east elevation removed the existing awning and replaced with new polycarbonate awning and LED lighting. For 264 South Broadway, the east elevation, they would remove the existing awning and replace with a new polycarbonate awning and LED lighting, LED lighting, excuse me. The applicant is not requesting additional funding, just approval of the revised materials. And the design assistance team did review and proposed, the proposed revisions, and recommends approval.
Thank you. Do you have any questions regarding this property, these properties? For the grant?
I'd like to be taking part in deliberations to vote on this. receptive that I might have a lot of potential interest in this, so I'll stay to vote here and participate.
Thank you. We will still have a forum, so, any other comments or questions?
Just to clarify, Jim, this already got approved for the same amount a while back, and they just, they just had to come back because they made revisions, correct?
That's correct.
Drew or Sarah? Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed design revisions to the previously approved improvement program grants for 260 and 264 South Broadway.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the revisions. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to consider an improvement, improvement program grant request for exterior improvements at 333 South Fourth Street.
This was also discussed last Tuesday at your work session. Joe Slack of HGE Architects requests Urban Renewal Agency approval of $100,000 improvement grant for 333 South Fourth Street, located in the downtown urban renewal area, and proposed for the vacant structure are improvements to the failing infrastructure system and development of a second floor into functional space for commercial tenants. Work would include improvements to the entrance, upgrade to the stairs to meet safety and code requirements, renovation and restoration of the unserviceable elevator, ADA access, plumbing improvements, lining upgrades, paint finishes, and major HVAC upgrades. If it pleases the agency, consider approval of the proposed improvement program grant request as proposed for 50% of the eligible expenses up to $100,000.
All right. And I know that the property owners are here. Joe, did you have anything to add? If you would, come to the microphone.
I've talked about it through work sessions, so unless you have questions, I'll be answered.
Does anyone have any questions for either Jim or Joe? This does not include any estimate or any funding for architectural design or anything.
That's correct. The applicant did not include architectural fees. That was borne by him.
All right. If there's no further questions, then I would entertain a motion.
Guess it's me tonight. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed improvement program grant request as proposed for 50% of eligible expenses up to $100,000 at 333 South Fourth Street, subject to approval of a required structural permit.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the program grant request as stated. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. And I did vote aye also. I forgot to say it twice. All right. Item number five is consideration to approve an improvement program grant request for exterior improvements at 481 487 Bennett Street. Are you taking this as well, Jim?
Yes, ma'am. And this was also presented to you at last week's work session. Joe Slack of HGE Architects requests a $17,154 improvement program grant for improvements to 481 487 Bennett Street, also located in the downtown urban renewal area. The proposed improvements include replacing the siding on the south wall, replacing a damaged roof beam on the south wall, and replacing overhead sectional doors at entrances. If it pleases the agency, consider approval of the proposed improvement program grant for 41 487 Bennett Street, as proposed for 50% of the eligible... for 41-487 Bennett Street, as proposed for 50% of the eligible expenses up to $17,154, and subject to the approval of required structural permit.
All right. Did you have anything you wanted to add on to this?
Thank you.
Thank you for the consideration. I might add that this is the smallest grant amount, but this will be the most visible. Those tarps that you see will disappear, it will be real siding, so we're looking forward to making improvements. Thank you.
All right. Any questions from the agency board? All right, then I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to approve the approval of the proposed improvement program grant for 481-487 Bennett Street, as proposed for 50% of eligible expenses up to $17,154, subject to approval of required structural permit.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the improvement program grant for 481-487 Bennett Street. And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. And that is the last item on our agenda for the, that is open to the public. We are now going to go into executive session.
The agency will now meet in executive session pursuant to...